Alright, so, welcome, everybody, to the third weekly vineyard meeting. We have new council member this time, three new, one returning, Justin Case. Hashtag Justin for Justin's Um, so, new members are Lily and Lion, over here. He was free, say hi guys, say hi, and Hexpot.
Hello.
Alright, don't say hi, fine. Um, and also, let's all give a big boot to Per Lego, who is returning from a week-long ban.
Woo!
Alright, so, today's, today's meeting shouldn't be that long, because we don't have too much to talk about. But, first thing, that I think we should bring up is the Swamis. Now that the dealer is gone, I think it's safe to say, and the lords have deemed the Swamis illegal, I think it's safe to say that we can also deem Swamis illegal across the board. What do you guys think?
I agree.
I agree now that the dealer's gone, yep.
Dave, Lily?
I also agree.
I agree.
Alright, uh, what about the people? You can chime in here.
Does anyone disagree? Well, that was easy.
Cookies, yeah. Alright, unanimous, illegal across the board. You got that? Sign, Hex?
Alright, cool.
Next up will be the lottery, that, uh, Lily, here, would like to put together, Lily, if you could tell us more about that?
Um, I, I was thinking we could have, like, a lottery? I was thinking it could maybe be like, twenty gold, or twenty-five gold, uh, per lottery ticket, which would just be a book? And all, like, the money we earn, oh, and the prize money would be like, two hundred gold, and all the money we earn would go to the town?
That'd be a good idea. Council people, what do you guys think?
That sounds like a good idea.
Goes towards the town, why not?
Yeah. We could probably work with you, Lily, on helping getting that organized, getting it together.
Can I ask a question, though?
Uh, go ahead, Bull.
How would we do tickets for this lottery? Because the only way I could think of would be books, but those cost fifty gold each to produce.
That's why I thought-
Lose the bookshelves.
Yeah, but we would still need to produce different tickets for every person. Couldn't have everybody have the same ticket.
But that's why I think that it should cost, uh, twenty-five gold, because it would be, the, it would be a hundred and something PMC gold, and then we'd be paying fifty PMC gold for a book.
It does seem rather, twenty-five gold, though, does seem rather expensive.
Nah, um-
Well, what we could do to lower the price is, we could have one winning ticket and like, eighty non-winning tickets.
Sorry, you're in local.
Yeah, we can just have, like, a couple winning tickets, and then-
Yeah, but then as soon as you get somebody their ticket, they would know if they won or not, wouldn't they?
Yeah.
Or you could write everyone's name and number in one book that the person running it has, and then you just get back-
We can, we can have books, labeled one to ten, that are randomly given out. One of those books, we'll only give out one of a certain book, and that will be the winner.
Yeah, we just do like a random number generator to choose the winner?
Yep.
Okay, it sounds, sounds legitimate.
Yeah, we could use a random number generator on our site to do that. So, we will work to get this organized, and we'll keep you guys posted in the subreddit. Sound good?
Yeah.
Yep.
Yeah.
Alright, uh, next up-
UHC talk, or?
UHC talk, sure.
What do we-
We need to set a date. So, um-
I think we should set a straw poll for the next few weekends, and we should take a vote on what day, Friday, or Saturday, or Sunday, whatever, end time works best for the next few weekends?
Weekend?
Does that sound good to everyone? Day and time?
Yeah. I feel like we should do it before August is over.
Yeah, that's, that was the plan.
Yeah.
That way we can get it before school starts for most people.
Yeah.
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 Vineyard only UHC, some guests, I guess.
Yeah, some celebrities from the L O N.
Yep.
Hey, alright-
Maybe the, we might let a lord join, you know, ask real nice.
Alright, 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 um, anything else on the UHC topic?
There'll also be votes, depending if it, if it's, uh, singles or teams, or whatever.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Singles, teams, strength two enabled, strength two disabled.
Yeah, should we vote on other things as well, like, should we make it like a day only, should we do borders?
We can vote on that once we get, um-
A day set?
Yeah.
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 Because once we get a day set, we can know, we know who can make it.
That's, we're gonna start a vote on that.
Yeah, we're gonna vote on that as well.
Yeah.
Uh, maybe we can even get a betting system to see who will win. Alright, so, is that all?
They're, uh, for topics, you mean, or for this topic?
Uh, for this topic.
Um-
Yep.
Yeah.
Alright, so, there's been lots of talks about the Vanguardians lately. And, um, people are saying they're real, some people say they're myths. But here we have our resident expert on the Vanguardians, and whether they're myth or not, so, say, if you can, uh, inform us, enlighten us, please?
The Vanguardians are nothing more than an urban legend.
Is that people? They don't exist, they're not real, there's no secret base anywhere.
They're an urban legend.
Mm-hmm.
In the vineyard.
Alright, just pass down generations.
There's currently a book in circulation that tells tales that are slightly related to events that have happened in Dank Donk, about things that happened with the Vanguardians.
Yes.
You'll notice it is written by me. They are an urban legend.
So, is everyone clear that if asked, the Vanguardians are nothing more than a myth?
Indeed.
Indeed.
Yep, agreed.
Alright, now, kind of going back to a previous topic, Shady McSwams is dead, some of us have proposed having a funeral for Shady. Uh, what do you guys think? Funeral for the drug dealer of the town?
Well, was he really a resident?
I think we should have a funeral for him.
He wasn't technically a resident, house was condemned.
Yeah.
I feel like we should have, maybe after the meeting, we should all go over there and just say a few words, some of us.
But have you seen all, like, the bad stuff that he brought to our town?
No matter what, he still had a wife and family, and we need to honor them.
He had quite, quite a run in our town.
Oh? Needless to say, he did have an impact on the town?
Yes, I feel like after this meeting, instead of going to the stoop, we should go over there and mourn the loss of our good friend Shady McSwams.
And let me go to the stoop.
I'm gonna go stoop.
Someone disagrees?
Oh, never mind.
Okay.
I mean, even if he wasn't a, not necessarily a nice person, as far as we're aware, he's lived his entire life in the vineyard, so he was-
He was just a businessman.
Yeah. Simply a businessman.
Trying to make ends meet, put food on the table.
Exactly.
Alright, so, unofficial funeral for Shady, after the meeting. Alright, what else do we have? There is-
The meeting Friday.
Oh yeah, the meeting Friday. On Friday, as you guys might have heard, there will be a meeting of all the districts in another, in another ward. And each district can bring two speaking representatives, but anyone can show up, but only two of us will be allowed to speak. And I, I also believe the LPD is invited, am I correct?
So I says yes.
Yeah, they invited us.
Oh, uh, well, I was about to say, I'm on a mumble with Saden, so I'll be able to find out if we're invited or not.
Oh, wow. Uh, please let us know, confirm.
Representative I talked to said yes.
Alright, well, LPD might be invited, but for the vineyard, of course, I will be one of the speaking representatives. And I think that Justin, being the senior ranking council member, should tag along. What do the other council members think? Opposed?
Plus, I can record it too, so.
Yeah.
I agree.
Dave, Lily?
I agree.
Wait, what?
That Justin should be the second speaking member.
Oh, yeah, yeah, I thought we already said that.
Oh yeah, but now, we're officially in the meeting. Alright, so, oh, yes, topics, what do you guys want to be brought up in the district-wide meeting?
What about things like a-
The LPD, probably, that would be a good topic.
The war, maybe, that is rumored to be happening?
Yeah, that sounds like a good topic.
Also, if any reporters come asking about a war, there's nothing going on.
Not a war.
Yeah, there are no plans for war.
Well, don't say it sarcastically, alright? There is no war, war hasn't been declared.
Would it be declaring war, though?
Not talking about it here, Bullseye.
Okay, okay, okay.
It doesn't exist.
Alright, alright, so I gotta bring this up, because, um, a court system, a legal system in the vineyard, for, I guess, legal matters that need to be handled. What do you guys think? Do we need one?
Where's, where's the count, where's the district meeting?
It's in another ward, on Friday, at five eastern.
I feel like we could use a legal system.
Does, does that mean we need a courthouse? Who will build?
Wasn't that gonna be on the guild plot if we get one?
I think about that. I, I don't think we're gonna be getting one, from what I've heard. So what I think our next best option is, is to buy a few plots that are next to each other, and build a few buildings on them, like that. That would also mean, yeah, that would also mean finding people who have, uh, alt accounts, or people who can invent their plot to build-
Yeah.
A volunteer's tribute.
There you go. Bullseye will finally have a home. That is his own. Alright, uh, so, about the court system, what do you guys think? Yay or nay? Just for everybody.
I think it's a good idea.
Well, it's our real need for it, though, like, haven't had any problems as of yet, that would require such a bill?
Do we even have any laws?
Well, the Swamis is our only law, and, um-
And I don't think we'll have a whole lot of problems, like, we haven't had, I'll say, that much problems with it so far, like, it's been pretty well managed as of now.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm.
Yeah, maybe we should hold off on a court system until there's a bigger need for it.
And if, and if anything comes up, we can always just use Romans in, uh, Southshire.
That's what the LPD's been doing.
Oh, yeah?
Yeah, we have, uh, we've had court cases before, but we've always used, uh, whatever courthouses were available, because we've got other people who are independent legal teams and whatnot.
Yeah.
Okay, and also, in case, um, anyone isn't clear, or we haven't made it clear in the subreddit, I think we should make it known that we are loyal to the kingdom?
Yes, very loyal.
Yes. We should do a vote right now.
Agreed.
Alright, is anyone against being loyal to the kingdom? Here?
I think we're one of the most loyal districts, to be honest.
You'll be stabbed if you say no.
The most vocally loyal. That's exactly what I was thinking, Hex.
Surprisingly, actually, after talking to so many people from the Cloud District, they're not even loyal, they're just neutral.
Yeah, I think, um, the, I think the Magic Quarter is loyal, or neutral, I forget, but the Barons, I think, is also neutral.
They're, I think, they're loyal.
I think the Magic Quarter is loyal, because they're loyal to Lord Nissivan.
Yes.
Yeah.
Uh, yeah, I can confirm, Magic Quarter's loyal.
Alright.
They tried to turn a rebel over to the LPD and rescinded their protection of him in their district.
Well, there you go. So-
Okay, oh, uh, I would actually like, nevermind, actually, nevermind, I was gonna say something, but I'll talk about it later.
Alright. So, vineyard loyal, I guess we should, we should make it more clear on the subreddit for people who are new to the vineyard.
Yeah.
Not to interrupt, but everyone do a little butt wiggle.
Everyone what?
Move around so you don't get kicked.
Oh, yeah. Do a little jig, guys, don't timeout. Thank you.
Alright.
Okay, um, is there anything else the council would like to bring up? I think I hit all the points.
Um, what about, uh, getting like a Garry's Mon server up, so we could play some of that?
Oh, that would-
Then, I've seen, like, a lot of people own Garry's Mon, it's a common game, it's pretty cheap, and, you know, it'd be pretty easy to get, uh, to get everyone playing that.
We're on the same lines, make sure everybody here has joined the Steam group, if you have a Steam account.
Yes, and everyone-
If you do have a vineyard Steam group.
Yeah.
I was aware of that, so-
Yeah.
I, I invited you to that side, but you never responded.
Is there a link that you can post in the sidebar?
It's on the sidebar, it's on the sidebar.
Okay.
Alright, another good question, there have been sightings of rebels in the vineyard. What should we do about them? Should we shun them?
I have the perfect solution.
Oh?
The ingenious JM303 has found the ultimate solution. I can throw out some books.
We don't-
So, why don't you just, uh, give us a brief summary of what's in the book there?
Yes.
Just read it yourself.
Per, give me one.
Are these the books that were at the police station?
Ah, I will, uh, read the book for everyone.
I didn't get one.
As anyone I might-
The book says, swiper no swiping, swiper no swiping, and swiper no swiping.
I apologize for my officer's behavior here.
Oh, God.
Alright, so yeah, everyone just let the books despawn in the middle of the table, if you don't want them.
No, let's not do that.
I burn them in dwarven lava.
There you go. Burn them in lava, do what you want. Okay, so, back to, back to the matter, rebels, how do we deal with them?
My people have said and thrown my books.
Please, they're terrible.
Bitch. Back on topic of rebels, I told them to just leave, I just told them they're not welcome in the vineyard.
Should we make rebels illegal and then have public executions?
Well-
To boost morale?
There's no way for us to-
Yeah, we can't-
Actually do that.
We don't have the actual power to do that.
We should take them to the, um, arena to kill them.
That would require their cooperation.
Yeah.
Or ask Nissivan, and we build a, uh, we build a hanging area.
The rebels have a notoriously bad RP anyway, so I don't think we can count on RP to punish them.
Maybe we can just have like a blacklist book with all the-
I really wish that there was an item that we could just use to get rid of rebels, if they check if they have rebel armor on them, instead of Swamis, like the Justice Rod.
But a lot of people have rebel armor that aren't rebels.
Yeah, that's what I was gonna bring up the question, I have a lot of Milby pants that I, I like because they're purple, and we're vineyard, and most of us are, like, our plot is, our color is kind of purple. Do you guys consider that as rebel armor still, even though it's not actually called rebel armor?
Well, it was distributed to the rebels by a rebel, so there's that.
Well, I think we should consider black armor that actually is labeled rebel.
How about this, how about this, the black armor, uh, don't wear it out in public, but the stuff that was distributed to the rebels, like, the purple pants, or the pink tunics, or the green, green shoes, just wear with caution.
Yeah, the fashionable, fashionable clothes.
Because still, it has been distributed to the rebels, and is affiliated with rebel members. Um, anything else? Council, or people in the town, that you would like to speak of?
Oh, another thing, yesterday, um, I don't know, I don't know, I don't know where, we started watching a movie together on, uh, watched together, and I, it was pretty fun, for a while, um-
Movie nights.
Uh, it'd be pretty cool if we could get everyone in watch together, you know, for some movie nights.
Maybe we can put up a straw poll, so people-
Yeah, we can put up a straw poll, on what movie we're gonna watch, you know, what time.
Oh, that'd be nice.
It was pretty fun, it was only like five, six of us, but, uh, then Lord Justin showed up in the vineyard, so we, like, kind of stopped watching to go hang out with him.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, I think that'd be interesting, movie nights. Oh, Sid, that's my seat. Thank you.
He just got here.
It's fine, it's fine, Sid. Alright, so, yeah? Is that something like something you guys would like to do?
Sure.
Movie nights sound good.
Sounds fun.
Yeah.
Sounds good. We, we do have to, we do have to make sure that, uh, it's appropriate, like,
nothing not safe for work, because there are some younger residents of the vineyard. Of course, of course.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Ruining their perspective on the world.
We could put a, a viewer discretion advised in the post.
If you watch The Big Lebowski, it only says the F-word two hundred and eighty-two times.
There you go, two hundred and eighty-two times.
Yeah.
Oh, that sounds good.
An average, it's an average of like, three point two times per minute.
Yes, PG thirteen.
No, obviously, we, um-
Also, we have a plug DJ for the vineyard.
Yes, if you don't know about it, Plug That DJ is linked in the sidebar to the vineyard subreddit.
It's a really cool thing.
If you're interested.
Plug That DJ is a place where you can play one of your playlists that are stored on YouTube or SoundCloud, and it takes turns going from each song in your playlist to another person's song.
Yeah, so basically, you each take turns playing songs for everyone that's in the Plug That DJ, you can all listen to it at the same time.
If you want a link, it's in the sidebar of the subreddit.
Yes. And there's usually a few people in there all the time, so it's pretty fun.
Oh, yeah, the, unless it's like a classic song, and it's not very much over it, there is a limit of like, five minutes per song, because we don't want people playing, like, long songs.
Yeah.
Yeah?
Yes.
I would totally never violate that and play an audiobook.
Right. Anything else, guys?
Nope.
Anyone from the town can speak now.
Oh, oh, hold on. All of these events that we're talking about, like water, should we make it available to other people from outside the district?
What? Make what available?
Like, the game events, the movie nights, should be, should they be, should they be available to everyone not in the vineyard?
Of course, I mean, I don't see why we should exclude people just because they're not in the vineyard.
Yeah.
Unless they're rebels.
Unless, unless they're rebels.
Except from Southshire.
Yeah.
Yeah, it'd be kind of been the way they're from.
There's nice people in Southshire.
Yeah.
Um, but about, about the lottery?
Look, look, here's, here's my thing on that, there are not people in Southshire, but they're in Southshire, they could have chosen to be in the vineyards, so they don't really deserve to join us.
Alright, so, like you were saying, Hex, about the lottery, and how the, maybe we should try it on a, a local level first, and see how it works out. Then if we can manage it, we'll go out where, uh, anyone can join. So that way we know if, um, we can keep it organized.
I have a question for the mayor, did you finish the, uh, Night's Watch man mandate?
Oh, the manifest?
Manifest.
That will be up by today.
Okay.
And, uh, yes?
I think, uh, making the subreddit for the, where's the Minecraft government more active again, being brought up at the world meeting.
Yes, that was something I planned on bringing up.
I think it should not be limited to where only like, two representatives from each district can post, because anybody that have a question should be able to post there.
I think you can repost and reply, you just can't make your own, um, your own thread?
Well, as far as, because I, I tried to, I tried to reply to something that was there, and it wouldn't let me, so I don't think you can.
Oh, I, I did, and I wasn't, um, I wasn't, uh-
Maybe they changed it.
Yeah, they might have changed it since then.
Yeah.
Um, another thing, just a big thanks to everyone for, you know, participating in our subreddit, we have like, we have the biggest subreddit, yeah, even bigger than, uh, the official Lords of Minecraft one, so, you know, that's pretty cool, so, thank you.
Yeah, so, great community, guys. Please feel free to post anything you want on the subreddit, as long as it's appropriate.
And the vineyard Minecraft, Minecraft, or, you know, Lords of Minecraft related.
Yeah.
Or the Ember.
Vineyard Bastard.
Vineyard Bastard.
Indeed. To address something Sidlord put in the team speak about a vineyard crack server, I don't think, as a, I don't think as a group, we should make a vanilla server that's up continuously, because that would, at least, I don't know if you guys will see it the same, but in my mind, that's borderline advertising on the server.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Because that's, that's creating a direct competition for the Play Minecraft server.
Well, we wouldn't have to, we wouldn't advertise it, and like, we wouldn't make it like a competitive-
Yeah, but either way, we're creating a direct competition for this server.
No, not really, it's just survival, those pure survival world, like, we had one going the other time. Uh, first Justin was hosting one, then I was hosting one, but it just, I don't know, for like, especially if, like, if there's, you know, twenty, thirty people that show up, like, I can't be holding all that, so, I don't know, it's-
Yeah.
We do have, we do have snacks.
If there's interest for one, I think we should do it.
There, Cookies and Milk says he has stable server, or he or she, I'm not sure.
Because technically, movie nights, advertising, because we're going out to a different website.
Yeah.
I guess, yeah.
But I don't think we should advertise that on here, on the subreddit.
Oh, yeah.
This would just be on our sidebar.
Anybody who's got the link, do not, do not ever tell anybody the link directly, because you can get banned for it, even if it is a Lords of Minecraft link to the subreddit.
We mentioned this last time, I think.
Yeah, but there's some people here who weren't here last time. One of our members here, Per Lego, got banned for it, because he advertised, he, he told one of the new members to the vineyard the subreddit link.
Yeah.
So just, just say slash R slash EMC Vineyard.
Yeah.
Is there any other questions or-
Oh.
Yeah, I've got something.
Alright.
Go ahead.
Um, I was wondering if we could maybe start a petition to raise the rent, not very much, but enough so that people who are just getting in, and like, aren't serious about the community, don't buy a plot?
Hmm, what do you guys think?
I like the idea, because there's a lot of people just moving into the vineyard, and they don't follow the RP, they just-
Some people just want to build, though.
No, um-
Are you talking about the rent of the entire server, or just the vineyard rent?
Just the vineyard, just because it used to be so high, and now it's so low.
I feel like it should, it should be a higher-class community.
I, I didn't like that they lowered it.
Their original price.
Also, the incentive, though, has gone down for people to move here, because a lot of the people that were just going to, like, move here, not even a RP, they were just gonna get the Swamis, that's now not an option for them.
I think, I think we should just leave it, because those people that do move in, they just, they'll hang around for a day or two, and then they stop playing. Like, the people who actually come in, who they want, like, they want to participate, they'll join the team speak, they'll like, you know, look around and stuff.
But then, but then eyesores are created.
Yeah, but also-
They'll go away.
Yes, we should have a petition about being able to remove giant blocks.
They'll go away, though.
I don't think that, I like the idea, but I don't, I don't think that would ever go through, because the lords, the lords don't put much power in the people's hands, and I don't think they give us the power to just destroy someone else's build.
No, 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 actually destroy it, like, a way to ask people nicely.
Well, we could do that.
Well, also, you have to keep in mind that school's gonna be starting soon for a lot of people, and, um, most people won't have enough time to play the games to keep up with the rent.
Yeah, the people who don't play are just gonna lose their plots soon, anyway.
So like, we're gonna be left with, most of the people who are committed to keeping their plot and staying in the community will be left. So that's also why they-
Anybody, now that the Swammy dealer is gone, does anybody want the plot that we have as a community besides the Swammy dealer? Because if no one does, I think we're gonna just let it go.
I think it's, it's, I think it's safe to say that we can just let it go.
Yeah, I don't think anybody wants that at this point.
Tony agrees. Yep. Alright, um, anything else? Anyone? Questions, comments, concerns? Feel free to speak.
Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Sorry, I was driving for a moment.
Um, I was gonna ask, uh, because I know that, um, that, I guess, I'm not sure if it was a rumor, if it was true or not, that they weren't gonna be having any more guild plots. Um, so, that's, is that really confirmed, or no?
No, not really.
We don't know.
It's not concerned, but what would we do with all that money we have stored up?
We can, well, even, even if there's not a guild plot, it'll still be going towards the town hall, like we said earlier. We can have multiple people with alts and stuff, like me, and I know Hex has a bunch of alts, and I'm sure other, oh, okay, I'm gone.
Yeah.
Do a jig, do a jig.
But, uh, we can have multiple, other people with alts can buy different plots in the same area that are right beside of each other, and we can build an impromptu, uh, guild hall, basically.
Yeah, or like, just have like the guild hall, maybe like, uh, like a big meeting room.
I was, I was saying earlier, there's a lot of plots available out by the Dragoon Embassy.
I don't remember who it was, I think it might have been Hex, but somebody showed me a really big plot with a few smaller plots around it that's available, really close to spawn, actually.
Maybe if we buy a lot of plots next to each other, we can get the lords to possibly combine them.
Yeah, that would be nice.
Because the lines-
Or if nothing else, if nothing else, maybe if we build on all of them, and we build like a wall, we can get the lords to just finish it in the few blocks between. Something like that.
It'd be cool if they took, if they combined all the, like, main community plots, like Justin's plot, um, but, the, like, the, like, all the, I don't know how to explain it, like, all the main plots that are more, that most of the community go to, and all comply, combine those into one plot.
I don't think, I think we should be very careful what we ask the lords for as a community, because if we ask for a bunch of things, they'll give us nothing.
Yeah.
If we, if we, if we decide on like, okay- If we, if we, if we decide on like, okay, can we have just one guild plot? Like, if that's all we ask, they're much more likely to grant that than hey, can you combine these plots and these plots, and also do this, this, that, and the other thing?
Exactly.
They're gonna be like.
Make it simple, guys.
Yeah, keep it simple.
I think we should wait for an official response from the lords that says
We should bring up.
Adding a guild plot before we do anything.
We should, we should bring up guild plots in general at the all district meeting on Friday, I think.
Yeah.
We can do that.
Does anybody know if there'll be any lords in attendance at the meeting?
I invited Justin, um, and he said that he might come by.
Lords in attendance.
Yeah.
They probably have heard about it and know about it.
Either vanished or unvanished.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Most likely vanished.
Um.
Yeah, probably vanished.
Can I bring up something else, too? Uh, are we gonna have the meeting here from now on, or what?
I think until we get a town hall, I think it's to be a good place.
Until we get a proper town hall with a door.
Yeah, this is a nice, large seating.
Yeah, this is a nice table, though.
Gives me something to do with my third floor.
Hmm, good view.
Lots of natural light.
Boo.
Yeah, nice and purple, purple and orange, like the vineyard should be.
Um, so, can we wrap this meeting up?
Any questions from anyone?
Comments, concerns?
Does the L P D have anything to say to the vineyard?
Go ahead.
Uh, nothing really, I'm just genuinely impressed about how organized and settled set up you guys are.
Yeah, man.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Um, I was gonna say, I was gonna say, uh. What was I gonna say?
The pants.
I forgot.
Forgot.
Alright, oh, oh, yeah, I would just like to remind everybody that the lords are people too, just like that chat we had with Justin. That can happen all the time, if you guys will just make sure you're calm.
Yeah.
When the lords are recording, they want you to act like peasants, probably, but not be annoying. But when they're not recording, I mean, they're just people, they might wanna come over and have a chat and hang out and talk, so don't, don't be jumping on the lords and placing animals and drinking potions and closing doors, just to be annoying, put sound in the video.
Yeah.
What triple you said, don't be a fanboy.
Yeah, don't be a fanboy, exactly.
I second that notion, because I talked to Lord Justin once before in the swimming dealer shop, before the video came out, just as normal people.
Yeah.
Yeah, and it's so much more fun, it's enjoy, it's more enjoyable for both us and them, and it makes the vineyard look good. It makes it, it makes us all look bad when you just run up them, in front of them, and start drinking potions and closing doors. It just, it's terrible.
Make sure you stay distance away from them.
Yeah, uh, be wary of Lord Aura.
Yeah.
That's.
Because you might get spankapped.
And especially be wary of uh, Roman.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
But lately, when I've been following around them, when they were doing their things, Lord Justin gets in my face, that's kinda different.
Yeah.
He has a crush.
Who, who, who doesn't wanna get into your face? I mean, right?
I'm ruining, I'm ruining Justin's dreams.
Is, is Char, is Char specific here?
Yeah.
Sire for sire, uh, Justin for hire.
Oh, Char, uh, Lord Justin has expressed interest in um.
Checking out the mate for mate.
Yeah, checking out mate for mate.
Yeah, I, I saw their video, but unfortunately, I wasn't around when they were, eventually, they're probably doing it like, late at night.
He also mentioned it again yesterday, I believe, when he was just talking.
Yeah, I've been looking to see where he's on, so I can just like message him or something.
If you can catch him in one of his streams, especially like pre or post stream, you can probably get ahold of him then, tell him you're on.
Yeah.
Also, we need more mate for mate dates.
Yeah, I just, I just saw, I wanted to go sign up.
After this, I'm gonna go sign up, too, and just.
Um, don't forget to visit the local businesses as well.
Yeah.
Yes.
Support our businesses, but.
Oh, yeah, if you have a business, is it, are we just, are we gonna say it's just allowed to like, advertise and put your coordinates and stuff on the, like, the Reddit once? Like, not continuously, but just like.
There is a Blue Pages for Lords of Minecraft.
Is there, is there a Blue Page?
Yeah, we can link it in the sidebar.
I think I, I haven't linked.
Oh, then it's linked in the sidebar.
Yeah.
Oh, okay, sweet.
Um, can we go mourn the loss of our Shady McSwams?
So, uh, is that part of the meeting, or are we wrapping up here?
Not a friend.
That is part of the meeting.
I was gonna keep that in my video, so I'm, I'm still.
And sitting on the stoop is also a part.
Yes.
Alright, so let's uh, let's all go mourn the loss of our good friends.
Guys, all shift, to show respect. Shift, to show respect.
He's our okay friend.
Yeah, shift when you get there.
I'm sorry, but I'm a good fitter.
Okay.
Just don't sprint, to show respect.
Poor Nicky.
Everyone stay together, don't get lost.
Hopefully, you know where it is.
We should, we should tweet this, I'm gonna tweet this to Jonathan.
Don't sprint, that's disrespectful.
Yeah, don't, just, 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 guys, just.
Just a calm walk.
Walk, just, just saunter over.
Yeah, just saunter over.
You're all sprinting and jumping.
Passed me, am I walking that slow?
Just, just a calm walk, guys, no sprinting.
Yeah, you guys are so respectful.
You get the road sprint.
I spent over a thousand gold on his, on his product.
Just gather around the caution tape. Look down upon the old layer of Shady McSwams.
Oh, wait, everybody get on the Plug Dot DJ, and somebody play one of those funeral songs.
No, no.
Don't, don't go inside the caution tape, it's there for a reason.
Yes, guys, be respectful, be respectful.
Oh, God.
Get out of the caution tape.
Out of the caution tape, guys.
No, we should go down and get right in front of where he was, and mourn the loss, you know?
Everybody just stand on the caution tape, that's, that's the best thing.
Does someone wanna say a few words, someone who knew him well?
I'll do it.
I will, I will.
Someone, go ahead.
Shady McSwams was a beautiful man. He, he boosted the economy of the vineyard, but he also, he also brought in many, many young children, and many many snobs, just wanting to buy and sell drugs for their own benefit. But he also boosted the donations that Salamander Soul received. He, he had a wife and family, and he loved them so much.
Oh, God.
Swim.
I miss him so much.
They got into this business, and then e- everything just went downhill.